Good evening, everyone. The local community school board of education meeting is now called to order. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Watson.
I love him. Obligations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. Okay, we will start with me presenting school this evening, so I will turn out the keys to Lieutenant Lambert.
May the President, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce Mrs. Anita Lawrence, our first political entry for this fantastic Canva presentation on Boardable 31B.
Which is a district provided program that has...
You're nominated. I'm sitting here after the presentation. Take it away!
Thank you for having me. As I was presenting on Boardable 3 versus the intensive students and coaching instruction, she was still in her box.
So I'm Stacy Noah, the district academic college candidate. The pleasure of working with these ladies a little bit each week. And so, oh sorry, I'm trying to make it clear. So, we wanted to kind of get an idea of what you already know about coaching as an instructional coach, and we also wanted to meet the potential and we're interactive. So when we have you take a quick survey in our presentation, and we're going to have you join our presentation by scanning this QR code here with your phone or going to canva.live and entering this code right here. Okay, please, if you even just type canva.live.
I'm in.
Okay, and then the slide to the next slide, we'll look at, I don't remember that. So when you need it, this is, the first picture here is what we're gonna see. And really, it's that bottom little box where you're gonna enter the answer in just a minute. While we're reading, if you want to have a little fun with some emojis, raise a little hat on our presentation. Okay. If it doesn't work, that's alright. You can pretend to participate. So like I said, you really want to know what do you know about instructional coaching? Alright, what is your background now? Are you going 1, 2, 3, or 4? So just a minute, and then after I go through this, all you're gonna have, what I'm gonna do is just enter 1, 2, 3, or 4. So are you an honest meaning, you know that it exists, but you're not really sure what coaching you want to do day-to-day basis? Do you have a basic understanding of it in the beginning? You've heard about it, you know that we work with teachers, you know that we work as a good to improve student achievement? Are you going 3, you have a very good understanding of lots of presentations about it? You know the coaching principles, the best practices? Or are you going 4, a loose concept expert, you know, add three things that we do it, but you just want to hear all the other things that we do? Awesome. So our goal really tonight is to move you forward. 1, 2, you're a 3, you want to move you to a 4. 3, you want to move you to a 3. We just want you to have a better understanding, not just what we do as instructional coaches in the district, but what we do specifically at Lynch. So I'm gonna go ahead and access this. So getting things from you with us. That's not working.
Yeah, it was on range. Did I say we need the best people to water your ass?
Okay, let's see that.
Okay, with education changing, every year, we wanted to make sure we were reading through all of our staff and students at Lynch. And our welcome back to you this year, over half of the staff who have been five years or less in their new schools. With the demands to help kids grow and navigate through curriculum has came, we brainstormed ideas for what we could do to narrow our focus with supporting our staff. And we looked at the data, where the most support was needed, and how we could increase our student achievement. And then after dividing the coaches between, with the teachers between the coaches, we came up with this plan that we are going to discuss with you about how we decided to support our per p teacher with more than just one coaches.
The challenge is I'm amazed.
Coaching you to the presentation.
What I'm gonna have is like, see up here, I talk to you guys, and I don't click it when I go to that.
So agree. We're tired of that same old game of...
Eighty-four percent of our staff at Lynch has five years or less in the district. That's why today, we wanted to spend time showing how crucial coaching is for the student group. Not only the general teachers, but we also work with the career professionals, special ed staff, and other kinds of staff. As you can see on the pie chart, sixty-three percent of our staff have only been at Lynch for two years. This is huge when you think about the amount of support the teachers made from our coaches and student achievement, or student achievement, not student teacher. With all of our PLCs this year being held before this school day, it has allowed our coaches to have more time to run end-up coaching cycles. This is a snapshot of the accomplishments that we made just in trial one this year. We've had over thirty successful coaching cycles so far this year. What we want to show you today is how crucial our coaching, our coaches are to the success of our students in Lynch. With that being said, I would like to introduce Porter Anderson, Nicole Gaden, and Stacy Noah to talk more about how coaching is played at Lynch, and how we were to take coaching to a different level.
So we know that other schools have presented on coaching and the impact it has had, but before we dive into the changes that we've made at Lynch and the impact that we're making, we wanted to touch on the three goals or objectives of a successful coaching cycle. First and foremost is student achievement. Our goal is, and the instructional coaching goal, is to improve our student data. Next is the improved instructional strategies or practices within the classroom. This can be from planning, modeling, instruction, and then the last one is professional growth. Not just professional growth with teachers, but also with us as coaches. And actually, this is the one that led us into the shifts that we made this year at Lynch. As we continue to go through the presentation, we want you to keep these three things in mind and think about how the changes that we've made at Lynch have impacted these three goals. So, now that you're waiting for us to tell you more, in the past, we've divided coaching by grade level, or we've tried to divide... Or we've tried to divide it by the number of like tiered students within the classroom. But I still felt like we weren't doing enough. We are spread so thin, we're chasing the tails every day. So over the summer, an idea popped in my head, and I told boss about it, she loved it. And it was like, why do I have to be the only coach helping this classroom of tier three students that are tier three across the board? Why can't the whole be perfect? Why can't, now that Stacy's in our building, why can't she be perfect? So that's where we went from there. We sat down, we planned, we looked at the data, and picked the four highest needs classrooms, and decided to all three coach those teachers. This shift in our coaching has led to improvement in the quality of instruction, an increase in student engagement and achievement in so many more ways than we could ever expect. At first, we were kind of worried that teachers might feel overwhelmed by having all three of us at once. But in the end, and you'll fear just knowing from one of our teachers, it actually lightens their load because we were all collaborating and all providing support. So it was actually helpful.
So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the impact of level efficacy. For the last three years, the administrators and instructional coaches have been looking at this idea, learning about this idea of efficacy and the role it has in education. And in the simplest terms, efficacy is really just the ability to achieve an intended or desired result. The collective efficacy is the belief that when teachers work together for a common goal, we're able to move students forward and to increase achievement. What you see here is a type of visual of some research that John Paddy did, with different elements in education and how they impact achievement. When you look at writing programs or homework or classroom management, what he found was that collective efficacy actually was the number one influencer in student achievement. Meaning that when we work together as a group for a common goal, we have the greatest potential to achieve student achievement.
Excellent. So you're probably sitting here thinking, how did Lynch take this plan and put it in Lynch? So what we did at the beginning of the school year, we sat down together as a team, we pulled all of our early data together, and we analyzed which classrooms have the highest efficacy. And we benefited the most from this new trio of coaching. So based on each of our strengths within our own coaching skill sets, we divided it hundred each teacher in class room.
So one of the things that we noticed last year was that, you know, we spent a lot of time on our graduate teachers. Right from the start, every year, they need our support. So we go in, we model with them, we plan with them, we co-teach with them. But in addition to that, it's not uncommon for us to hold or text or send emails several times, and maybe one day just from one teacher. And so we wanted to still be able to provide the support that those teachers desperately need, but also not forget the teachers, the rest of the teachers in the building. So that's kind of how this idea came about.
The model of coaching works with us because of the rapport that we have with staff, the rapport that we have with our students, the rapport we have with each other. We also collaborate all the time, constantly going to think ideas off of each other. But now, when I'm asking one of them, or they're asking us, we're actually talking specifically about the students, and we all know the students. So we're able to have a better feedback and more focused direction on where to go next. There we go. So the data... So the data we're gonna show you is from one specific teacher in our building whose student data warranted extra coaching support right from the beginning of the year. So after several coaching cycles, we saw a huge increase in student data, which in turn carry over with evidence through the teachers administrative walkthroughs. The student data clearly showed that instructional shifts have been made and are still being implemented. And this is just a snippet of one teacher's student data, and I am showing you all the coaching cycles that you already completed, even just with this teacher this year. So we sat down with this teacher, we had all of her three assessments available, so we could look at where the highest needs of students were. When we first started though, as a newer teacher, she was really struggling with the classroom environment before, having to make, making sure that she has a learning environment, I don't know, feel safe with the students. So that is where we started. I went in and got some free data, and we turned the goal to students. We'll use team building to foster a sense of belonging and collaboration among students. At the time where we went with free data, only thirteen percent of the students felt like they were in a classroom community. However, after using multiple instructional shifts, such as team building activities, paying structures, and moving more towards a student-centered classroom, there was an eighty percent increase in coach data for this, which is huge. This is what needs to be in place to continue to teach the rest of the year. The next data that we looked at were her FOP assessments, which is a district assessment we give. And after digging into them, we realized that a lot of the students were struggling with miscues and fluency, and it was hindering their comprehension. So throughout the planning, co-teaching, and modeling, we made many instructional shifts that addressed the learning target, and then we were able to advance those students to the next level of learning. And as you can see here, throughout, through the second coaching cycle, we saw an eighty percent increase in student fluency. We are now on coaching cycle three with this teacher, and new data has been reviewed, and we've moved to another student learning target. So this snippet of data that I want to share with you is from two of the first cycles that I completed with this teacher. So the first cycle focused on developing an optimal learning environment for the students to thrive in. And I'm delighted to share with you that the coach data showed that ninety-three percent of the individual student needs were being met, therefore increasing the student achievement. The second set of data that you see here was focused on student demonstration of their knowledge of strategies within their multiplication and division unit of science and math. There was a seventy-four percent increase in growth as a result of this coaching cycle. The pre-assessment data showed that only eleven percent of these students were proficient. But by the end of this cycle, many instructional shifts had taken place, and these same students were eighty-five percent proficient on their end-of-the-unit math assessment.
So as an instruction, or as a... I suppose I have a little bit of a little different, in that I typically have two goals in comparison to an instructional coach. I usually have, my first goal is typically a teacher-centered goal, because I need to teach the teachers how to use the technology before we even really be able to look at how to start implementing that and integrating that into the curriculum. So when we met with the teacher initially, we determined right away she was going to need to learn how to use the technology. She didn't have any real prior experience with the technology, specifically the smart board. So I needed to show her how to use the interactive word feature, that making sure it's a real platform, and how she might integrate it later on. After that quick mini-cycle, the teacher and I met, sat down, and we had a quick, had a coaching conversation about what she learned and how she might be able to apply it within her instruction every day. One of the things that she was the most concerned about was that MTSS block of time this year. When she's working with groups and the students are supposed to be working independently, she was concerned that maybe they weren't using that time as productively or as effectively as they could be. And she wanted to see how she would take something that we learned in the mini-cycle and apply. So we looked at using the real platform in conjunction with the new font system, you know, with curriculum, and created some digital activities that seemed easier at that time. And we also decided to implement or integrate the IXL program to the district purchase and help support curriculum, and then a free resource called New Words to help promote comprehension. So together, we developed the first student goal, which was that the students could be actively engaged in curriculum through the use of interactive technology. At the beginning of the cycle, through observation, we noticed that only about fourteen percent of our students were actually actively engaged in curriculum content during that independent time. By the end of the cycle though, we had turned that into eighty-nine to ten of the students. So that was a, that was a great shift there. And when we were looking at the data though, at the end, we collected this data from those resources, IXL, and New Words, as well as the real platform. We noticed something else. We noticed that, yep, they were definitely more engaged in what they were doing, but they weren't all necessarily using those three resources for equal amounts of time. So that MTSS block is typically about forty-five minutes long. And some of the kids were lingering on one of those resources because they liked it better. And we felt like there was value for all three of those resources. Each one of them that we selected had something different that it could offer in helping the student achievement. And so that brought us to our second cycle, and our third goal, which was that the students who demonstrate autonomy and team responsibility for their learning during their independent time. And so we developed a framework that they could use during that time that will allow them to know what they were supposed to be doing and when they were supposed to be doing it. So at the beginning of that cycle, based on that, we actually collected that together. In the other cycle, we noticed that only about twenty percent of the students were accessing all three of those resources for equal amounts of time. By the end of the cycle, we had moved that to ninety-two percent. We thought it was pretty awesome. So there were three instructional shifts that were made as a result of those two cycles with the teachers. The first was now she was able to use that technology, this smart board, to enhance her instruction, make it a little bit more engaging. The second was that she was using the resources, IXL, the words, and the real to differentiate her instruction, to make that independent more, that independent time a little bit more meaningful. And then the third was that she was now using the free work consistently to ensure that each of those resources were being used.
Can I ask a question? So, can you go back to the previous slide?
Yeah.
I'm curious, what, how long are the cycles? Like, is it days, is it weeks?
Well, I'm really confused. Like Stacy said, she does some that are mini-cycles. So those might last anywhere from two to four weeks. Sometimes they could be three weeks. But typically, our coaching cycles last around seven weeks. They're really just a...
And do we know what grade level this is at?
This is fifth grade.
This is fifth grade, okay. Because I assumed it was an older grouping just because of the... Thank you very much, appreciate that.
I'm curious what a good benchmark would be, like, you're getting eighty-nine, ninety percent. What would you say was sufficient to remind you of your goal?
Well, I mean, our goal always is a hundred percent. But being realistic, if we're anywhere between seventy-five and eighty-five, we're pretty.
And like, so in the number, so like that eighty-nine percent, really that was like, based on some of the data we collected, I might have had two kids that I couldn't get to participate in this.
So what I'm gonna talk about is what you might see if you come to Lynch on any given day. You might see us holding an initial planning meeting. What does that mean? A planning meeting where we're sitting and identifying our coaching focus based on student data. You could see us modeling in a classroom. After we modeled, we're debriefing with these teachers to talk about what instructional shifts can be made to enhance student achievement. You might come in and see us co-teach with teachers. After that, we're debriefing with the teachers right after that. Reflected conversations are also something that happen constantly in our building, so that we can ensure that we're all bringing our best to the table. This also includes our weekly coach principal meetings with Anita. And I know you may be excited, but what we look for is still in full course at Lynch. We really have the best resources right under our home roof at Lynch, and we don't take that for granted, we take full advantage of it. We also hold weekly planning meetings with the teachers that we're running cycles with. We want to talk about how's the week gone? Is there anything that needs to change? We want to make sure we're all on the same page and what we've lost last semester. Data analysis is something that we spend a good amount of time on. Yes, we do have free data days scheduled throughout the year, but that's not the only time we spend looking at data. We are always looking at formative assessments and the next steps for instructional shifts to enhance instruction. So I realize that we just went with all of this information and yeah, then talking points. As we asked, we thought it was like that. But what we said, we want you to reflect back on the three objectives or goals of a successful coaching cycle and how the shifts that we've made in our coaching at Lynch has impacted those three things. It's basically true. So if we would have been looking at the same teacher last year, we would have had two coaching cycles started at there. This teacher has now had six plus coaching cycles, and has been, you know, these kids have been targeted in almost every single content area. We are making a huge impact right out of gate, you know, starting in August, September, so that these instructional shifts are there and being implemented throughout the year. We want to say we're still working with our other teachers, comparing coaching cycles with them as well. So this is on top of. And now we have testimonial from one of our amazing teachers at Lynch. And she wants to talk about from a perspective of how this trio coaching model has impacted her instruction. So I'm honored to introduce Ms. Megan Henley, one of our amazing fifth grade teachers at Lynch.
This is actually my second year back in teaching, kind of like a new teacher. I have previous teaching experience, and then I'm doing this for thirteen years. And I got that chair, I'm a little mad, I'm a few sub, wait until you get along.
How's that working for you?
Be a strong word when you come back.
So a lot obviously can change in thirteen years. Stacy kind of pointed out, like, I don't know if she was talking about me and that. But I walked in, I'm like, what is that? If I left, then you had to wait for me. I don't know how to use my voice. So that was a reminder, now I moved to fifth grade, and I was like, I'm actually leaving my cold spot for three years. Fifth grade, there's a lot of curriculum, so these are taking me down some important kinds of areas. And I'm gonna be, and I guess we survive that. It's definitely, she was on our competition, you know, like, I don't know, you know? When Anita and the coaches came to me with this idea coming in the year, it was like, okay, I am gonna try. But I might be a little bit successful, like, this is, we can do this. And Anita, I think, you know, pretty about me, and I was like, come on, she's feeling, you're getting picked on. And I was like, well, you're getting picked on, I feel the opposite of that, like, I feel loved, like, not picked on, for sure. So like, they weren't gonna touch on some of these things. We planned together. Once a week, we sit down, we catch up with lots of things, we... They push into my room, or they might go to for reading, writing, safety, editing topics, and MTSS support. And thirteen, fourteen years ago, I had a home book cart full of home books that my kids, you know, utilize, and so I was like, I don't even know how to work these things. And then my math wizard is, is in a hole because I, I'm gonna be honest, that's probably the most stressful thing, like, that fifth grade math, I have my writing, and it would be really dusty, and the fifth grade math is like, it's so clean, so I was panicking about math. So the best part, they push into my room. Daily, weekly, if I text them, help, someone comes running to my door. When we go to plan, it makes that time so much more efficient and effective because they have been in there, they know what I'm thinking, they've observed my lesson. I always have tons of writing and thoughts and ideas. I love that I just like, that, hey, what do you guys think about this idea? And they're like, maybe you watch mine, but that's a really great idea. So that does help us move forward, they know where the kids are at. They know, maybe that concept is a little bit too hard, let's, let's go down, let's reteach. Or they got that, let's get them something more challenging. So that makes, like, any, like, a million times easier. Like, it takes a guesswork out of lots of things. But that's the analogy I can use to guide with this. Think about like that two-year-old thing you're at, and you talk mom and daddy, go train me, you're like, I got this. But mom and dad still walk behind you, and they're like, um, look at me, I'm... I'm a name, I'm like, oh, you don't got this. But I know, they're not gonna let me hate with it. They're not gonna let me fall. They're gonna catch me, and they're gonna figure out why I was like this. I don't even exist. What can we do? I mean, they're the best high men in Texas, seriously. The pep talks before math lessons, I'm like, no, remember, Cole, can I do it? It does count back to me, I'm a student. I'll come down and pep talk, you know? Please, please help me. That level support tells me that Anita and the coaches, they care about you. They value me, they are invested in me. They are giving me what I need to be successful. And then I can turn around and give the kids what they need to be successful. I think that's like, insane and awesome. We always talk about individualized instruction for students, individualized instruction for students. They are individualized and supportive of their teachers. And that's amazing, that's so progressive, that's so forward-thinking. I'm getting wine, and a lot of people are getting what cheese. But I mean, they're all different, y'all have our strengths and our weaknesses. I, I'm a firm laborer, and I have positive things for other positive things. And I think it's such a powerful example for my students to see, when teacher has to help, she needs support. So it's okay for them to ask for help. And I mean, we're like, I'm super happy to take it. I do help, it's okay. They can get asked, not only are they gonna affect the culture of, this is a safe place. You guys can ask for help. You guys can take a chance, you can make them safe. You can do whatever you need to do to do your best for them. Make that big mistake, that overall whole job, the kids do it backwards, with whatever you need to do.
Jared, cut that for the coaching commercial.
Us too. Tell us it.
I'm starting out in this position. I was taught for a couple of years, but I'm not in this position. And when you come into an administrative position, you think, I am going to accept it. I'm gonna make all these kids score a hundred percent. I'm gonna, you know, parents are gonna walk me into, my teachers are gonna be the best teachers on earth. And that's still ultimately my goal, starting to actually start doing this position. Reality setting and responsibilities, and sort of I want, and when I go in that I'm a teacher, I see what I could do to support them, I pass my vision onto my coaches, and trust that they're gonna do it. I see what I could do to support them, I pass my vision onto my coaches and trust that they're going to do what they need to do to support my teachers. And I'm just scared, but makes me want to cry, because it's happening, I'm going to support them. And I'm switching things up this year, I was a little bit nervous because I was afraid of the teachers who were all around. And what I'm seeing from our four brand new teachers in the building, it has, it has grown our teachers. And that's my goal, that's kind of what I want to do as an administrator, is to grow my teachers, to grow our students, and it's like. Um, I, I can't end my presentation without showing you guys a little bit more of what we're doing in our building, um, and showing them a little bit of our toys. So we need a little, um, I don't, I don't know.
I want you to have it, I want you to have it all. May you be yourself and ain't it just like placement? And may you keep the chaos and the clutter off your desk. May you have unpassable health and less stress, having no possessions that will be miserable.
Did, did head, was, was everything was, I have a little baby on it, but it doesn't.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have another question?
I really liked the concept of the old school teaching going into the new kind of school teaching and just the passion, just used to over here watching them cry. It was a whole scenario, so it was really interesting. And the biggest thing that I heard you say is you were scared, and I really appreciate the fact that you came out of that and you did this because it's amazing.
If you would come to work most days, you can see Michelle, I can't cry.
I just think it's really, I, I'm really glad that you guys use all of your synergies together to create such a collaborative approach. Um, I think that's, that's really, I think what people are really missing more now, uh, prior to COVID. I think people are really missing that very collaborative approach, so I'm really glad that you guys approached to do that this year. Um, it sounded scary, I thought too, it was like, oh, how about I like three people over my shoulder, but, um, I think it's really a must say. And the other piece is as a teacher, the part that I loved hearing you say, it's okay to fail. Right, I mean, we need to teach our kids continuously that it is okay to fail because that's how we learn the best. So I, I'm so glad that you're expressing that in your classroom and the kids are embracing it and they're asking lots of questions. I mean, that's, that's a big key piece that we need to continue to live that we don't see today. So keep doing it, I say to myself, what's Slime just going to bring to us this year? Because it's like, I'm so in love with the lighting wood floor that at work, it's like, my team is like, what is this lighting wood floor? I don't call it that with my team, but we do something very similar, um, and then I was like, oh, what are they going to bring? But you guys just keep, every time you bring, and you keep bringing the notch up. I'm, I'm impressed with what you guys do under the roof, and you utilize every single aspect. Every single tool you have, you guys are bringing it to play, we can see it in the kids, just thank you, keep doing it.
I'm going to say real quick, Anita, I have another transparency about being an administrator, as I teach business management, and I've been in education for a long time, and I'll dawn on you earlier in a little bit, that we, we get frustrated at times with educators and that they don't get the management principle, but it looks like you created a culture, and I think that was really cool. You, you saw that you have to delegate, you have to go over to make investigations, so, it was, because you can see it in everyone, so, thank you.
The energy and the passion, and it's just infectious, I mean, I want to come and observe. Just, just to see the collaboration and just to see the data and the before and the after, and that's why I asked, like, what grade level are you feeling? How are you seeing these things wonderful?
We synchronize math, teach around nine AM. I love having people in my room, I think like more than, more than the area, like, everyone knows my daughter, we know everybody, you want to come and see how people look, I'll do it. But hang on, I don't care, you want to be here?
Well, your honesty was a wonderful, refreshing, like, portrayal of what it's like to be a teacher because so many of us, I mean, we're older, we're not, I wouldn't know what to do with the smart board, I mean, I know I'm blocking.
Right, she's talking about you.
But I remember the first time I saw a whiteboard, I thought, what is that teen doing in the classroom? And you're like, I would probably feel the same way, um, because it sounds like you're about the same age as me, and just, just, it's a total transition. And I admire the heck out of you for taking a hiatus and coming back because, wow, that's just amazing, and to know that.
I don't think you need to give my thanks.
Well, we're lucky to have all of you, and I just, I thank you so much for your presentation tonight and the time, and just the energy that you brought tonight, and thank you so very much.
The top state is eight fifteen five, right before math, just if you're.
Yeah, I don't do the math.
Right, yeah. Um, I was, I was at a meeting in Lansing today for, for my business stuff, and that, what you guys said today was said earlier as well. And, um, more patients believe and will never leave their doctor when their doctor is strong enough to say, I don't know as well. And I'll find out, or I'll look, right? So when you're willing as that person to take a step down and go, I'm not sure, I need help. That patient isn't scared to stay with you, they're happy to stay with you because you're not just faking everything to get through it, right? You're actually going to get the right stuff, and then they're like, oh, I could be wrong too, and I can learn from it, you know? So it was just funny that I heard the same exact kind of statement from them and here today, so kudos to all, thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, and the tech coach, can you make it to the Advent Building? Could you get over here, there's some guy, something about Panza. I don't know. What's going in my report?
We have something special next week.
Okay, so she's the idea, she knows she's the tech coach. Thank you, Stacy.
I'm glad we have a school climate and culture where it's okay to publicly bully our.
It's okay to say we need help too.
That's right.
I need a six-week coaching cycle, I need. I don't deal with board members. I hate the prayer.
Well, thank you, we appreciate it, great job. Okay, so we do have a public comment this evening. A board meeting is a meeting of school district business held in public, it's not a public meeting. The board is not going to respond to those making public comment, but will direct the superintendent to follow up with the presenter. Thirty minutes is set aside for public comment, so each presenter is being asked to keep their comments brief. The board does not comment in public on any student or employee and asks the presenter to be respectful of any personal comment about. Christine Montal.
Hi, it's hard to follow, um, all those children and meetings tonight, so. I had an announcement before, we usually come up here and, um, talk about the LEST member of the month, but I'd first like to announce that as of about an hour ago, we have a change in our view of leadership. Um, Tina Capshaw was our president, she stepped down, and an hour ago, Nikki Patrick was, um, appointed our president. So I'm looking to announce that. And also, um, in the last month, Renee Sharns has been appointed our new secretary. So that means I just get to be vice president and do this. Um, it's been a really good month for Renee, she is also our ambassador from Lola Norman, and she also had won, um, uh, LEST member of the month. So can I have her come up?
And what?
It is a good month for Renee. Same, she spent with the district for seven years, um, the best thing that she likes about the district's staff and students. I talked to Wyatt, and, um, the things that he said about her are, what you say about almost every head secretary, and it's hard not to make the analogy of mom of the school, you know, with your kids, but Renee knows everything, she knows where everything's at. With Wyatt sitting there going, I don't know, and then she's like, it's not on the ceiling, it's in a hard cover.
I love that, I love that.
She knows everything, he says that we call her at night and with any hair burning scheme, she usually organizes it, makes it better, it makes it happen for the kids. And we all, we all love Renee, and we're all very, very fortunate to have her.
That concludes our public comment for this evening. We will head into our presentation, the chairman, our chief superintendent wants you to.
Thank you, Madam President, here from Planet Moran to present our thousand twenty-three audit report, found in hands. Welcome down.
I'm done, thank you.
Man, the presentations are just flying.
I'll be your Vanna tonight, so.
Don't go anywhere, space.
Oh, man.
Typically, up in here is the room quicker than the hall.
Yeah, right.
Jeffrey.
No, I appreciate the time on agenda to, um, report out on the audit results of the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three audit. Um, we did meet with the finance max committee back in October and covered these, um, billable items, the financial statements, the single audit report, which is the couple of programs, um, the end of audit letter to the Board of Education, as well as his presentation also. Um, I'm happy to report that on the basic financial statements for the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three school year, um, we have issued an unmodified opinion. And to clarify, an unmodified opinion is the highest form of a level of assurance that we can provide that the financial statements the district are fairly stated and can be relied on. Um, the single audit, um, there were three major programs that were tested, um, for the single audits here, which is significant for, for the year. There is only one or two brands that are already tested. Um, we have also issued an unmodified opinion on the single audit report. Um, I did want to note, um, a few additional items. So, um, two thousand twenty-three capital projects fund, this is a new fund, um, and fiscal year twenty-three, we sort of did, um, issue funds, um, that were approved by the owners of the community. Um, and there were some initial expenditures, um, in the fiscal twenty-three year with that ramping up, um, under the plan the district has to deploy those funds. Um, there is compliance requirements surrounding those expenditures. So each year, as the district is audited, um, those expenditures are not only looking at for the numbers, um, but also for, um, what those dollars are paying for. So the allowability of those expenditures, as well as the practices and procedures around kids, um, and that very, um, sentences are in accordance with the valid language. So that's an additional, um, compliance test that we'll perform each year going forward. Um, two items not specific to fiscal twenty-three, um, there was additional flow-through retirement funding, one-time funding, also fiscal twenty-three. As I recall, um, the legislature, um, approved a billion dollars of additional one-time payments into the retirement system for fiscal twenty-three. Um, they have a spread amongst all districts, and, um, the district has, it was two point seven million dollars, and it is reflected as revenue to the district, and then it is directly goes into the retirement, so also an expenditure. So when we look at revenues and expenditures, you're going to get seen often because it increases your revenue and increases your expenditures, where these are really dollars that you have no ability to spend them and available for. Um, also wanted to know another theme, of course, that you have kept for the years, that the living room is, uh, hands down, it's a lead dollars in the utilization and wind down of that funding, and there are grants related to that as well. Um, the end of audit communication to the Board of Education, we just wanted to highlight that that touches on, um, several important things related to the audit. What our responsibilities are as the district's auditors, um, management's responsibility as well, um, for the financial statements, um, and if there are any changes in accounting policies and highlighting significant estimates and additional details that are available for the board members to read. Um, there is a big deal of additional information in that letter as well, um, but just for your, your reading. All right, we'll, we'll put the numbers here, general fund fund balance at June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Um, the fund, the real sheet is a snapshot in time, it is as of the date, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Total assets for the district approximated fifteen point two million dollars, and that's made up predominantly of cash at around five million dollars and receivables. So at June thirtieth, the district is, is still waiting on, um, June, July, and August state aid payments at that point in time. So that was a tax of nineteen point seven million dollars, I think, in the year. On the flip side, um, you have liabilities and deferred inputs of, um, of resources, approximately seven point five million dollars, and that relates predominantly to accrued liabilities and other. and other against the payroll, the teacher contracts that would be paid through the summer. Next graph, we're looking into general fund revenue and other financing sources. Total revenue for the district was $63.8 million approximately. And again, this is the increase in revenue. Total increases are around $11 million from fiscal 22 to fiscal 23. And that stems primarily from additional funding and increasing state aid approximately for the moving out of people. Again, working at history here, and I know you're living in the current year. You have one-time funding from federal, from the service payment. And then, you know, there was a decrease in the number of students, about 130 students in fiscal 23. And that was really offset by the increase in funding as well. State revenue was around $48 million of your total revenue. Federal revenue, around $7 million. There was approximately $3 million, if you recall from last year's audit, that due to the timing of when the state reimbursed the district, you were unable to recognize that revenue in your fiscal 22 report. And we'll see the impact of that in your fund balance. But that was able to be recognized in fiscal 23. So there was $7 million and $2 million that were related to reimbursement. This next graph tracks the people count foundation allowance over the past six years. The student population is the line that is detailed in orange. And the foundation allowance is detailed in blue at the top. As you can see, the foundation allowance for the past few years, there have been increases in the per-people foundation. That differs greatly from probably 14 years previous, where it's really been stagnant in the amount of increases in funding. So although it looks like there's increases, there have been a lot of delay in the amount of funding to equal the amount of operating center for the district has. Continue to see decline in student enrollment, as I mentioned previously, between fiscal 22 and fiscal 23. We've got about 130 students. This graph details the COVID-19 relief funding and the various grants that the district received. The ESSER grants, the GEAR grants, all those small ones, but are primarily focusing on the ESSER 1, 2, and 3 grants. Total awarded overall was around $9.5 million. And as of June 30th, the total expend to date was approximately $5.6 million. Also depicted on the graph is the timelines as to when those dollars are required to be sent. In the teal color, that details the amount of the award. And the orange color details the amount that's set to date. For the ESSER 3, which is the, you know, key remaining grant that the district had at fiscal 23, the district has until September 2024 to deploy those dollars.
But these grants, they're specific, right?
Yes. So there's also strength attached to those dollars and lots of supporting requirements related to those dollars. And, you know, I think what our message is then and a reminder to everyone in the community is these are not recurring grants. And so great care needs to get sent and needs to be taken as to how those dollars are spent. So they know coming out of receiving this funding, that certain operating expenses are still going to be in existence, but any revenue to offset them will not be any longer and playing accordingly. Now, let me add general fund expenditures. This graph details expenditures and other financing uses. Total expenditures for the year was approximately $6.1, $6.7 million. Total expenditures were up approximately $5 million, if you look at last year, and are made up primarily in the categories of instructional-related costs, support services, and other capital that's surfacing. This graph, graph also details general fund expenditures. And it breaks those expenditures down by object code. The previous graph is by function. This is by department. This is by object. And compares 2021, 22, and 23. Salaries and fringes were up significantly. As I noted, that's where the 147 C, the retiring, that one-time payment is reflected. And that is, in salaries and fringes, is the predominant expenditure, of course, of the district. And then finally, general fund fund balance. So the impact of the revenue that the district received and the expenditures for the year. So this slide shows the general fund fund balance over the past three years. And each section of the graph represents a different classification of fund balance. Really dictates how those dollars are going to be spent. So fund balance increased 3.1 million between 2022 and 2023 and to a remaining balance of $7.6 million. About 228,000 of that was prepaid, which is non-sentable, that's in red. And 7.4 million was considered unassigned. The table at the bottom of the graph tells fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. And this is the common benchmark that just used to measure really the adequacy of fund balance. As you can see, in, at the end of the year, fund balance as a percentage of expenditures was 12.6% compared to 8.2% for fiscal 22. You can see the impact of that $3 million that was planned to be spent wasn't. And then now it is recognized in fiscal 23. Take a moment to give recognition to not only Mark Rader, of course, but to Erica Ingles, who I know who is not here. Erica started with the district in the midst of the audit last year. And she has done a tremendous job in getting up to speed with all the uniqueness of school district accounting. And it is a specialty that you don't have the expertise out there on the street to, you know, and she has just jumped in, and I know she's a teacher. And it like made it her top priority of making sure that the district was prepared for the audit. She understood all the requirements and all the processes and controls and the things that we look at. And it was, it was a pleasure working with her. And I'm sure, I'm not sure she thought it was a pleasure. But it really, really was. And I'll continue to be impressed by the great strides that she's made. Please express it to her.
Maybe walking in busy. I don't, I open that.
Yeah, I know that either.
But I appreciate the time tonight. I know you're, and you have to answer any questions that you have.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions? Great. Thank you so much.
You too.
Okay, let's head into our reports for this evening. We will start with the personnel committee. Ms. McCann, would you please share about your personnel committee report?
The personnel committee met November 1st at 6:30 PM. I myself called in. I was being able to borrow some of the present. Others attending, Matt Warren, who can see clearly, Michael here, and Mary Moss. The assistant bargaining for the contracts was discussed, expiring in 2024. Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources can secretly update the committee on the two open contracts within our bargaining units. These contracts will expire on June 30th, 2024. The LES P secretaries and paraprofessionals and SEI food service personnel. And the meeting was adjourned at 6:48 PM.
Any questions or concerns? Thank you, Ms. McCann. We will head into the policy committee. Dr. Novak, would you please share with us the policy?
Yes, we met on November 17th of 2023 at 1 o'clock via Zoom. Myself and Jamie Wilford were there as committee members. Craig Watson was absent. Other, others attending was Kim Sealy, Matt Warren, Joe Wood, and Mary Moss. Again, we called the meeting to order at 1 o'clock. We discussed the policy 8400 school safety information. This policy provides a very broad overview of all things related to school safety. Goal of this policy is to identify and give authorization to the very variety of areas related to school safety. This policy also provides direction to comply with current legal requirements for reporting. The only recommended changes to this policy are to add reference by number to the specific policies and administrative guidelines for each specific school safety event. And then we discussed policy 8420 emergency situations at schools. This is guideline for addressing emergency situations at school are directed from board policy 8420. This policy gives authority to create the mandated emergency operations plan, also known as the EOP, and directs the district to comply with mandatory drills for various schools, for various schools of emergencies. The recommended changes to this policy are to provide policy-level direction for two other significant school-related emergencies, including establishing a formal guideline for assessing threats and responding to emotional crisis related to death or suicide. While the district already has established guidelines and/or procedures for adjusting these items, we want to make sure the authority is given explicitly in the board policy to direct and comply with established guidelines. Guidelines in both areas will be reviewed with board committees and the full board in the new setup. The board policy committee reviewed the same. The above policies that have been recommended will be moved forward for first reading following a small change in policy 8420 and our meeting adjourned at 1:21 PM.
Any questions, concerns? Thank you, Dr. Novak. And then lastly, Finance and Operations Committee, Dr. Watson.
So November 17th, Finance NOS committee met, which was Summer Parkman and Lisa Novak. I wasn't at that either. Others attending, Texas. Others attending, Erica Ingles, Mark Rader, Brian Bader, Julia Berzke from Mark Mello, and Mary Moss and Matt Landry also. The meeting was called to order at 2:00 PM via Zoom. The committee discussed the bid pack 5.1, high school additions. Formal bid recommendations from Mark Mello was reviewed with the committee, which covers the high school additions for a total amount not to exceed $4,748,473. It was the consensus of the committee to recommend full board approval. That's tonight's meeting. Tennis court repair, the formal bid recommendations from Mark Mello was reviewed with the committee. It was recommended that the Goddard Coatings Sports Service be awarded the bid for an amount not to exceed $97,000. It was the consensus of the committee to recommend full board approval tonight. Bottom change orders. Change order number three, less than bid threshold amount. Julia reviewed all the bid pack change orders that were less than the state required bid threshold amount. These were shared with the committee as informational purposes only, and no board action is required. Change order number four, VP number three, Schickler Fire Exit Corridor, Emergency Egress Corridor. Mark Mello recommends the issuance of a change order to Clark Contracting Group for adding an emergency egress corridor in classroom C117 at Schickler Elementary as required by the state fire marshal in the amount not to exceed $39,158. It was the consensus of the committee to recommend full board approval tonight. Change order number five, CFI sidewalk. Mark Mello recommends the issuance of a change order to BNL Construction Group for replacing the existing sidewalk at CFI that runs from the south parking lot to the main entrance for an amount not to exceed $49,593.75. It was the consensus of the committee to recommend full board approval tonight. Meeting adjourned at 2:35.
Any questions or concerns? Thank you, Dr. Watson. And that concludes our reports for this evening. We will go into our action items. The first is consent briefing, approval of minutes of November 1st, 2023. First reading of policies, policy 8400, school safety information, policy 8420, emergency situations at school, and rescheduled January 3rd, 2024, coordinating to January 10th, 2024. Is there anyone wish to remove anything from the consent briefing? Okay, I'm hearing none.
I'll make a motion that reading of the minutes be waived and the consent agenda items be approved as planned.
Okay. Mrs. McCann?
Aye.
Mrs. Labar?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Lipka?
Aye.
Ms. Hopeur?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Ms. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Next, we have the bid pack number 5.1, high school additions.
I'll make a motion that bid pack. So the bid package 5.1, high school additions be awarded to Culver Development for concrete for an amount of $313,000. Arisco Contracting Roofing for masonry for an amount of $946,201. Meadow Steel for structural steel for an amount of $288,690. Clark Contracting Services for general trades for an amount of $825,000. Zimmer Roofing for roofing for an amount of $172,100. Preferred Glass for aluminum entrances for an amount not to exceed $254,159. Amex Painting, ink for painting for an amount not to exceed $69,500. Continental Contracting Company LLC for flooring for an amount not to exceed $158,100. Absolut Fire Protection Ink for fire suppression for an amount not to exceed $138,473. Dickerson Mechanical for mechanical for an amount not to exceed $776,000. DeHart Electric Ink for electrical for an amount not to exceed $409,750. For Corde's Brothers Trucking and Excavating for site work for an amount not to exceed $397,500 for a total amount not to exceed $4,748,473.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none? Mrs. McCann?
Aye.
Mrs. Labar?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Lipka?
Aye.
Ms. Hopeur? Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Ms. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, tennis court repair.
I'll make a motion, tennis court repair be awarded to Goddard Coatings Sports Service for an amount not to exceed $97,000. Score.
Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none? Mrs. McCann?
Aye.
Mrs. Labar?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Lipka?
Aye.
Ms. Hopeur?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Ms. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, change order number four, bid pack number zero three, emergency egress corridor.
I'll make a motion, the change order number four, bid pack number three, emergency egress corridor be awarded to Clark Contracting Group for adding an emergency egress corridor at Schickler Elementary in the amount not to exceed $39,158.
Okay. Any discussion on motion? Hearing none? Mrs. McCann?
Aye.
Mrs. Labar?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Lipka?
Aye.
Ms. Hopeur?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Ms. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. And then change order number five, bid pack number 2.2, CFI sidewalk.
Motion, change order number five, bid pack number 2.2, CFI sidewalk be awarded to BNL Construction Group for replacing existing sidewalk at CFI for an amount not to exceed $49,593.75.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? Mrs. McCann?
Aye.
Mrs. Labar?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Lipka?
Aye.
Ms. Hopeur?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Ms. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, and I think that concludes our action items for this evening. So I will open it up to your number communication.
Will you note for that moment?
And I didn't say it last. Have a good night. Must be a good night. I can forget it next time.
Um, I was gonna say, the one thing I saw that was funny with the tech, um, number, the kids at fourteen percent, you know? That just surprises me that the kids started at fourteen percent. That's all they do is on their phones, on their tablets, on their whatever. Like, I would think that would be the hardest, like, kind of number to shift of them getting on it. It might be a bigger shift to make them do what they're supposed to do on it, right? But just to see that number start at fourteen percent, I'm thinking, all they're on, all the time. Like, why wouldn't they buy it in school too? But that was just kind of shocking to me to see that that starting. They're all like, what, they actually learned through books there? What? So, I was just not, it started so low. It was just shocking, but it's awesome to see where we're at, so, great job.
I would like to thank Wyatt Stevens and Renee Shrons for inviting me to be a part of the fifth and sixth grade reconfiguration committee. Um, we're gonna be starting meeting in January. We've got dates for January, February, March, and April. And there's quite a few other educators on the list and other parents. And I was just honored to be asked, so I'm looking forward to that. And I know a lot of it is a revisit of what the original reconfiguration, back when we, you know, suggested it, but I was honored to be asked and I look forward to moving forward, preparing for that reconfiguration in a couple of years. So, thanks to Wyatt and Renee.
Nice. Anyone else?
When you think about it, that work was five years ago. We think it was five school years at Popeye's, so it's more than probably dusting off. Like, that's gonna be big work.
Well, Monday night, I had the pleasure of going to the fifth grade concert. And wow, I was so impressed. I, I haven't been to a fifth grade concert in a long time. But I was so impressed to hear the ugly note, all the way to the last Jingle Bell song. These kids were amazing. Never opened an instrument for majority behind that. And then to be able to do it all together, Jingles, was pretty amazing. So, I just wanted to.
I'll be a quality learning coach behind that improvement.
I'm sure, I'm aware. It was amazing. I just wanna give kudos to those kids, 'cause they have to, they meet twice a week. And that's the impressive piece. So, they're doing majority of the practicing and encouraging at home, which is fabulous. So, that connection, you can see it happening, which is important to our kiddos. And then, again, I just am impressed on, I'm gonna be a little kid in elementary school again, honestly. Just be amazing from when.
Well, seconded every motion, but except for that one.
I can say, I mean, honestly, when I was younger, I was a student who had trouble reading. Second grade, trouble reader. I could have had amazing learning coaches, we had many teachers. I think I would have had a much different experience as a child than I did. Um, so, I just applaud you guys for doing what you're doing and keeping, thinking out of the box and driving the change. And we're seeing in the kids, so just wanna continue to appreciate what you do for us. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Superintendent London.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, you know, certainly echoing a lot of the comments about my presentation. It's no secret how we feel and what we've committed to as it relates to coaching. I thought that Megan's, what she shared tonight, I mean, probably you could not summarize it any better. Teaching is a very isolated profession. And part of the problem, I think, and looking at those faces, we've all been in the business twenty-five, twenty-plus years now. We, we started as first, second, third year teachers, taught in the classroom and leadership roles that you guys are all in. You certainly have a much broader perspective of education at large than the average classroom teacher. I'm sure you would all agree that if you went back into the classroom now, just knowing what you know in your current role, you would be a better instructor. All of us feel the same way. And to hear Megan admit what we all know to be true, which is, this is a really hard job. And to stand in front of a group of fifth graders when you don't feel your best is a very scary thing. And for years, we, I'll be very bold and say, we lied about how that feels. And we've all said, oh, yeah, we, we got it, I got it, I don't need help, I don't need to be evaluated, I don't need coaching, I, I got it. Um, and it's just not true. And I'm sure it's a false sense of confidence and security that we want to project. But at the same time, to sit there and say you're gonna have three professionals. I would love to have three people who did my job. Sit down and families to you for the week, all right, man, how are you gonna attack your job? And here's some insight, here's some best practice. And then when you do it deliberate, let's revisit it, coach you up. I, I can't even imagine how much better of a leader I would be, or any, any one of our professionals, right? So, it just, that's why we continue to support learning coaching. And we don't need less, we need more of it. Because no one in our teacher, another bold statement, our teacher preparation programs in college don't teach you how to walk in on day one and do what these ladies are doing with these teachers. It just doesn't happen that way. But we need entire staff development offices, and we don't have it. And this is the closest we can get, and it's absolute gold. Because Megan is gonna need them for another year or two, and then she's gonna be on her own. And they're gonna attack and approach someone else and build that person's capacity. And what they're doing, right, now Megan's students, without that coaching, she's a great person. She's, she cares, there's all the passion in the world. Those students would not be learning at the rate they are without those coaches. And Megan really cares, but she just sat there and told you, I, I wouldn't be effective. So, think of the, I just think of the exponential growth capacity that learning coaching is imparting on our teachers. Awesome. So, just keep them on your radar, and we're very proud of what, what you guys do. Um, we had a difficult week in the district prior to Thanksgiving holiday um, as it related to some threat investigations and some things that were happening in a few of our buildings. Um, beyond that, we had some difficulty as it relates to the community in absorbing our district communications in a not-so-positive way. We had a lot of time as a cult team, many of board members were involved in this, and my building administration teams about debriefing, what have. Um, I put together a really quick presentation just to share with some of our folks. I'm gonna be very honest with you, our frustration and the level of care that we take in each of these individual circumstances, especially related to threats. Um, and I wanted to bring some context, not for our board, but for those watching, those in the audience, about what is required each and every day to manage through these incidents. And it's a Herculean effort, not just on the part of our administrators, but our staff, our community partners, like our school resource officers from the sheriff's department, the city police department, our other first response agencies. The amount of time that has to be invested as a building administrator is nothing short of, it's insane. I don't know how else to say it. I, I, I took a lot of inspiration from Megan and all of her admissions. Took a lot of courage to come up here and say, ah, I haven't read math books in twenty years, but I'm teaching it tomorrow. You know, we're just human beings. We're just human beings, and we're all doing the best we can. And we had a presentation today from Bishop Legal Counselors related to the importance of conducting quality investigations. And he gave a couple preface remarks before we guided the nuts and bolts of it. And he, he represents a hundred and fifty school districts. So, he can see even a much larger perspective than what we've experienced here in the period, whether you're a parent, community member, business owner, employee, student, administrator. And he said two things that really resonated with me. He goes, we are in an era with low trust and extremely high agitation. And everyone starts at ten. And when you have low trust and high agitation, it complicates your capacity to build relationship in, in any, any way, whether it's interpersonal, whether it's work. And so, whether it's a district email that goes out to parents, or it's a Facebook post, or it's anything with low trust and high agitation, it's no wonder there's so much gray in the door there and negative comments. So, I wanna share the following with you. So, we are fully invested in, you know, threat assessment, Alice training, as I've seen all this stuff. We're taking major steps to secure our buildings through the bond, doors, locks, cameras, uh, closing classrooms, key systems, P A systems, all that stuff is, is happening. It's ongoing, um, the work is, is happening every day. I think it's important that people understand that that isn't like a one-shot deal. It's literally a daily process. And, and that, that is a parallel to, you know, you look, you listen to the presentation we heard today. Like, that's what we all wanna talk about. We, we all just wanna talk about that. But when you're running a school district with, you know, four thousand plus students and ten plus buildings and ten thousand parents, sixty million dollar budget, we don't have the luxury of focusing on what's most important, which is what you heard from Lynch today. We, we all wanna just talk about that. But our, our district attorney mentioned another sad reality today, which is, teaching and learning isn't the top priority of school districts anymore, it's health and safety, which is a sad commentary on where we're at. Uh, we have for the last two years, uh, taken considerable steps to update emergency operation procedures. Most recently, a review of the Oxford Report was a six hundred plus page report, independently conducted by Oxford in the wake of their school shooting. We have juxtaposed those findings with our current emergency response procedures and all the things that we're learning about quality investigation work. Uh, in the midst of all these things, um, we're very limited in what we can communicate. So, I just wanna, I, I ask a rhetorical question to the community. With limited resources, when we get a threat in a school, is it more important to you that we are one hundred percent focused on mitigating threat? Or do you want us to give you a whole by-blow email as we, our district communication, as we're going through the threat? Because there's only so many bodies to go around. I submit to you, and you'll see it later, I'm gonna save you the suspense. The Oxford Report was very explicit in saying, districts are and should be limited in what they can share with the greater community. I know we all have an insatiable desire, desire to know every intimate detail of what's happening in our kids' school. We're all parents. We have the same inclination, the same desire. You know, I had two students, my own children, who went to Oxford High School. And my middle son was a year removed from this shooting. So, don't think for a second that we don't take this very personally. But given the limited resources that we have at our disposal, it's probably best if we're committed to the work of actually making sure the kids are safe when these threats come through by investigating, by talking to potential witnesses, by talking with the school resource officers, by engaging in quality investigative techniques. Our process absolutely works. It absolutely works. And what's unfortunate, that I have to admit, is that it works and you'll never know it. You'll never, ever know it. And that's okay with me, 'cause I don't want you to. I don't want you to, right? And what we would love to do is be able, at the end of the day, deal with the threat and then go to the top of the mountain and tell everyone in the community the gory details of what we went through that day to satisfy your curiosity. But to also, it'd be easier for me as the leader of the district to say, this is what we dealt with. This is who was involved, and this is how the people that you're paying to protect your kids dealt with it and did a great job at it. Good job, I can't do it. 'Cause protecting the anonymity of those involved, it is a constant tug-of-war with enough information to tell you as parents what we think is good, but not too much is to expose privacy rights, investigative limitations as the police get involved and, and we run our communications by them first. Like, hey, is this saying too much, is it not saying enough? There's more than just Matt and Jared sitting in the back office, sending send on these Facebook posts. It's, it's dozens of people involved in these communications. And I'm not saying this to make excuses. I'm just trying to paint a picture of what the realities are of the things that we're confronted with dealing with for, for you guys. This, you can't read this. This is an example of an investigative summary report that our principals, we require them to complete every single time a threat of any type passes by their desk. Date, time, who they spoke with, th- these are questions and answers. You're looking at three to six hours worth of work in all of these, the, these, these documents that they're required to do. Um, and this is just a small snippet. Now, these people are running a building at the same time. But when they get a threat, potential harm to students, guess what? Their day of managing a building is over. As is the entire cult team. Meaning, phone rings. Matt, I, we got a rumor, we're investigating it, they begin their process, which is very scripted, very directive, right? And our cult team essentially calls a timeout to our day. And I begin engaging each one of them. Kim, I need you to help the principal with interview questions. Jen, I need you to get the C-State documents and make sure they're directed in the right direction. Uh, I call technology, can we start looking at some student social media posts to see if we can get any information from them? Michelle, talk to the principal and have some feedback from the district, uh, the building counselor or social worker. Do we have any background on the child? Uh, Mary, where are we at with the student, did they have a discipline history? Jared, let's start working on a potential communication plan, we don't know where this is gonna go on social media. All that stuff is happening with the most flippant of statements that a student may make in the hallway about a shooting or a gun. That entire process happens in this district. I'm not gonna put a number on it, multiple times a week. Just kids saying stuff that they thought was innocent, and in some cases, it was more substantive. And each time that happens, every single one of the people I just mentioned doesn't assume, ah, it's just a middle schooler saying something dumb. No, it's reviews for surveillance cameras, interview students, interview adults, talk to parents, communication plan. And all those things, we had one recently that was two and a half days. My administrators had to get in the car, drive to EdTech to interview more students. And I'm sharing all of these gory details with you, not to invoke sympathy, not to say, oh, poor, poor district administrator, all of the work you have, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying, just give us a little grace and know that our biggest concern is not giving everyone in the community a whole by-blow. Our biggest concern is finding out if what was said, or what was alluded to, or what was threatened, is actually legitimate. It's gonna put our students and, or our staff in harm's way. Because we take our job as administrators very seriously to the degree that if we have good investigative techniques, we're putting ourselves in between our staff and students in harm's way. And that's important to us. So, last thing, in the wake of the Oxford Report, it's a lot to digest. It is a lot to digest, okay? We're meeting with our K twelve group in a few weeks to break apart that data and what was said in that and take some key learnings away and how it relates to what here, both the good and the bad, to be transparent and honest about where we're strong and where we need some work. I wanna read a couple things to you. As a third, a fourth paragraph, as outlined in the report, school districts are limited by federal law in the information that it can disclose about students to parents and committee members. Further, in the immediacy of a potential threat, officials must weigh the potential consequences of too much or too little specific communication. Each potential threat has to be evaluated on the basis of its own merits. There is no communication, uh, portfolio that we just pull up and copy. uh, portfolio that we just pull up and copy, paste, and send. Each case is unique and different. This is not a one-size-fits-all proposition. So, we have to just take a timeout, a pause, as a group of adults who are charged with making some very difficult decisions. And I'll leave you with this. The day after, we had to send students home early at the high school, I had the opportunity to go into one of our high school classrooms, and for over an hour, I listened to our high school students tell me, very specifically, that the level of vitriol that the adults in our community exhibit on social media platforms like Facebooks, like Facebook, increases their anxiety, makes them feel less safe, and, this was the killer, have less faith in the adults to solve the problem and keep them safe. If that doesn't scare the hell out of people that, whose first reaction to these announcements or rumors is to plaster over Facebook just to see what everybody thinks, we're going to combat that. Here's how we're gonna do that. We are right now planning a forum that I'm gonna lead with, uh, students from our high school, and we're gonna have a community conversation around people forum, and we are going to invite people to attend this. We're gonna broadcast on Facebook, and you're not gonna hear it from me, you're gonna hear it from our students, who are our customers, by the way, who should be our primary concern. Not the adults, not the staff, not me, not the board, not the, our students. Now, you may say, well, you know, what does a sixteen-year-old kid know about it? Well, I'll tell you what they know about it. They're going into school in a hell of a lot different environment than anyone in this room had to experience. We didn't sit in our high school classroom with the same level of anxiety and fear that our kids have to experience because of the world they live in. I'm not blaming anybody for that, but that's just, that's a reality. We didn't think about any of this garbage when we were in school. We got to feel safe, for the most part. Imagine being a sixteen-year-old kid today. I'll tell you what they say. They don't come to school and not think about it, any day of the week. Their levels of anxiety and depression and distraction are off the charts. So, this is a challenge that I wanna issue to our community. Can you please help me model for kids how well-meaning and caring adults, model for kids how adults solve problems, how adults reduce anxiety and stress in kids, which, by the way, is just job one, and use social media in a responsible way that helps us as the people that are gonna be the ones protecting your kids in, in an unfortunate circumstance that could fall any of our districts, help us get to solutions. I'll end with this. What we can have is what happened two weeks ago. A middle school student texts their parent three things that they said were happening at their school, all three of which were completely untrue. It involved a SWAT team, the police, the, the, the surrounding of a student. This person posted that on Facebook, and what do you think the reaction was to that post from other people in our community? Sheer panic. And what I don't understand, what I don't understand is how we, no offense to our young people, I love them, but did you maybe exaggerate a thing or two, or maybe get it wrong when you communicated it to mom or dad when you were thirteen, fourteen years old? Maybe? And you guys were better kids than me. We can't take it at face value. We have to do our due diligence as parents to verify before our first reaction being, put it on the internet. Because you know what happens now? Now those same principals, police officers, teachers, who are trying to go solve a problem, now have to deal with the barrage of people who are talking about this post that really doesn't even mean anything, 'cause it's completely untrue. It takes valuable resources away from the adults who are trying to solve a real problem. More to come on this. It's my longest superintendent comment ever, it will never happen again, but this is too important, I have to lean on to some degree, because quite frankly, and I, I, I've been the superintendent for thirteen years. I'm the first person to say, there are things that we can improve on as a district, there are things we don't do perfectly, but I also have to defend our staff and our people when I feel like they're being attacked unfairly. And I can tell you, after reading some of the Facebook posts and what was out there about our people, these are people that are crying themselves asleep at night 'cause they're so stressed out, 'cause all they wanna do is get your kid home to you at the end of the day safely. And they have to go, their wife, or their husband, or their kids have to go online and read what's being said about them, because they didn't send an email fast enough. It didn't contain the right information for a bulk of our public. They didn't think it was good enough. And again, I'm not saying we're perfect. We're working hard to get better every day, but man, we can use the support. But pure community schools, community, we can't do it without our parents, we can't do it alone. We need your support. Please think before you post. As my public service announcement, I yield the mantle of my time back to the Madam President.
I mean, I'm glad you did bring that up, Superintendent Lomond, 'cause thi- this is a very, very important topic. Um, and, and really, we can't ask enough for our parents. We know it's tough to be a parent. I was a parent, I mean, my daughter was-
You're not a parent anymore?
Not anymore.
You were a parent.
I was. I'm not anymore, I totally quit. But, um, it's time to really just take a deep breath and really think things through, instead of automatically just knee-jerk. We need more of a little bit of breathing time, let your mind refocus, to really focus in on what is important. And what is important that our staff, our teachers, everybody does is keep our kids safe. That's our number one goal, obviously. Health and safety have become the top, most important thing. So, we do need, um, everybody to just reach in and be supportive together, collaborative. That's what we keep hearing, right? More and more collaboration. If we could get that kind of community to support the work that we are doing, um, that is exactly what you're asking for. So this is super important, so I appreciate it. But, I did forget something in my comments, and I'm so sorry, but I want to thank Mark and Erica for sure. Um, it, it would be really shameful of me if I didn't, 'cause there is so much work that goes into keeping our district very clean financially, all those accounting principles, that's a lot of work, and I don't want it to go, go unnoticed. All of the efforts that you guys put in, um, to help us create a budget, to help us stay within our budget, and to meet all of our accounting principles, year after year, we get an A rating, um, and we can't do it without you guys. So, I wanted to make sure that I appreciate, we appreciate you wholeheartedly, so. With that, I think we're done. Hey, Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Lipka?
Aye.
Ms. Hofer?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Ms. Putnam says aye. Motion carries.